Likewise. Likewise. Okay. And I just want to know, because I'm just, I just like a physical program. Okay.
Yeah, like I said, we'll start that in the sun.
Okay, I like that.
And I think Red Oak's going to score first.
Oh, okay. I hope so. I'm gonna be there. You gotta let me know if I can be there.
You want to go to the table?
Yes.
I'm sure it takes you to use another shekel on.
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
Okay, I'm serious. I want to go see what I do.
All right, we got one minute.
Okay. That's your food. That's your food. Oh, what is it? What is his?
Chicken and veggie if you want it.
If he's not gonna be here, I'll take it.
So we read the executive session first. Good evening, everyone. How y'all doing?
Good evening.
I will now read the executive session. Members that were present can vote favor or against. Whereas the Brunswick County School Board has convened an executive meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Brunswick County School Board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore it be resolved that the Brunswick County School Board hereby certifies it to the best of each member's knowledge. Number one, only public business matters were lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, such public business matters as were identified in motion convenient executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Brunswick County School Board. All in favor, please vote nay or aye.
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 Aye also. I will now make a motion or take a motion to call the meeting to order.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to call the meeting to order.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, School Board. I would also like to make a motion that we allow Ms. Seward to join in virtually to our meeting tonight.
Mister Chair, I make a motion that we allow Mrs. Seward to join in on the meeting tonight.
Virtually. Second.
Virtually, thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Clary, would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Seward?
Aye.
Mister Warwick?
Here.
Doctor Burns?
Uh, here.
Ms. McMillan?
President.
Mister Perrier.
Thank you, ma'am. School Board, y'all have had a chance to read the agenda. I'll take the motion to accept the agenda.
Mister Chair?
Mister Chair.
Okay. Second?
Signify, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. All right. First of all, I'm gonna take a minute and read our mission, uh, first, I'm sorry, pledge of allegiance, please, from Victoria Coleman, our eighth grade student from Russell Middle School.
We will now observe the moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Good evening, members of the school board, district staff, and community members. I am Victoria Coleman, an eighth grade scholar at James Solomon Russell Middle School, where we focus on reflecting, refining, and revising. Here are a few highlights from RMS. On August 27th, we kicked off the year with our very first behavior incentive. Our students had a fantastic time playing basketball, sharing popcorn, and enjoying time together as a community. And it was a joyful reminder that we celebrate positive choices and our school spirit grows even stronger. Tomorrow evening, we will host a home football game against Nodaway at 6 o'clock PM. On September 25th, we invite families to our family night from 5 to 7 PM for hands-on activities and helpful learning resources. The next day, September 26th, we will host our first school-wide STEM challenge, encouraging curiosity and collaboration. At RMS, we are always moving forward, reflecting, refining, and revising. Thank you for supporting our student staff and the future we're building at RMS. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. As always, we would like to start as our mission statement here at Brunswick County Public Schools. Within a safe and supportive environment, we provide every student with a strong education that will enable them to be productive citizens who are college and career-ready and able to complete in an ever-changing world. A vision statement educating students, inspiring success, and improving tomorrow. And I would also ask, if y'all please would, would if you please silence your cellphone and if you could not have any side conversations, we'd sure appreciate it. And with that, I will now turn it over to our superintendent for comments.
Good evening, Mister Warwick.
Good evening.
Ms. Seward.
Good evening.
Doctor Burns and Mister Millen, general community, and our board clerk, Ms. Clary. The presentation in your board packet is just my comments for the season. There are about 15 slides, but I'll be relatively brief with it just to give you an update of business that's taking place and exciting events that we have had the opportunity to see our students through in this first month of school. So our first month today really marks our first month of school. We started school on August 8th after we were unable to start on the 7th due to weather. And our students and staff have come back full of energy. In some cases, it seems like there was a weekend and not just a summer break, some of them just jumped right back into action. I've been fortunate that I've had time and the opportunity to visit school buildings. I try to get out into the buildings as often as possible to engage with the students. And we've also had a really busy schedule of community events. And in the classroom so far, teachers have been working on establishing routines, procedures, and collecting data. And you'll hear more about this from Doctor Hampton and her team about how they're using that data to set new goals, to take BCPS to new heights academically in this next school year. We've received some positive feedback from CIP. And like I said, Doctor Hampton will share more information with you about that. Our new staff members who are new to joining us are learning more about our community and getting involved. And just a few of the things I've had a chance to do so far in this last month since we met is attend the James Solomon Russell History Day, attend some fall sports activities. Thank you, Victoria, for the invitation. I will be at the middle school football game tomorrow. Can't wait to see the Lions play. I've been to several Brunswick High School sports activities. The Jazz Festival was awesome. The BHS band really, really entertained everyone at that. Was fortunate enough to attend the District Two Town Hall with Mister Tyler and Miss McMillan. I've attended the Governor's School Board meeting as well as the Region Eight superintendents meetings, among others, VASCD and several others. But there are a lot of things going on. I just tried to put together a montage of little silhouette figures to make sure that everyone stays focused on the fact that our kids are really busy. And we see them playing football, but they're also in culinary arts class. The kids in band are learning chemistry at the same time. They're working on their careers. And I just see constant advancement through engagement and activity. And I'm just thrilled to see what our kids are doing so early in the year. And we hope that they keep this momentum going through the remainder of the school year. Just a few school highlights. One of the things I'm really proud to see is that the students and staff from the middle school, now that they found their new home on campus, are making it their own. They're with Mister Chum. They're painting murals, hanging up signs. Like I mentioned before, the BHS band really just lit everyone up when they performed downtown. I had an opportunity to go see, the students recognized Ms. Jayla Dunn at Red Oak Surgeon when she was awarded with the Rising Star. And the kids were so excited for her. So we're really proud of her accomplishments. Facilities projects, this is a picture of up on the roof above the seventh and eighth grade classrooms in the BHS building. That's what that roof looked like when it was inspected for wet spots, slope issues, and areas of leaks in May of 2025. And over the summer, that roof was repaired. And you basically need to wear sunglasses when you go up there now because it's that bright. So some of the areas where water was ponding, they adjusted the slope to make sure it's all draining off. They fixed drains. The roof companies, Garland, our manufacturer of the sealant, and Escola, the installer, did an excellent job. At our new elementary school, if you've driven by, now that Planters Road is back open, you can see the marquee where the signage is gonna go is being constructed. HVAC is being installed, finishing up with that. The canopy breezeway, that was not there a week ago. And now, in the last week, they put that up. So you can imagine that's where our kids will be walking in and out from as they go out to the bus. And I really like that epoxy flooring that they put in all the bathrooms. It's gonna be really attractive. Traffic update, from our last meeting, we did discuss the fact that work was gonna be going on. They started that work where the detour was in place for planters and school days. They have finished the work on planters, but school days continues to make really significant progress, but they're still working on it. And where it's blocked off, if you could walk down there and look where they're digging and trenching into the street, that hole is about 10 feet deep. And they had to take that all the way up past where transportation is to connect in with the water. But they are making really good progress. Athletic stadium project, Mister Perrier and Mister Warwick had a facilities committee meeting and met with their counterparts on the Board of Supervisors Small Group Joint Committee on August 27th. The CMAR process for RFQs is complete. We have two contractors that the school board will have an option to move forward with the RFP. And there'll be continued discussions about this process as the school board and the Board of Supervisors meet in the future. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doctor Carter.
Recognitions and presentations.
High school was up first.
Good evening, Mister Warwick, Mrs. Seward, board members and community at large. We're here to present our senior of the month, our first senior of the month, in the person of Ms. Joy Bell. We're certainly excited and delighted to present Joy. She's our first senior of the month for the month of September. Come on up, Joy. And Joy is the daughter of Michelle and Cory Bell. She has a cumulative GPA of 4.13. Joy participates in the Governor's School Program at Southside Virginia Community College and is a member of the National Honor Society, FBLA, Y Street, and 4-H Club. She's also, she also plays tennis in the spring. She plans to pursue a bachelor's degree in biomedical science and follow the pre-med track. Joy's goal is to become a pediatric oncologist and care for children with cancer, helping them lead a more healthier and better life. She also enjoys reading, crafting, and spending time with her family and friends, as well as expanding her knowledge about the medical field. Joy's favorite quote is, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future, from Jeremiah 29:11. Ladies and gentlemen, our senior of the month, Ms. Joy Bell.
Well, I'm really thankful for, to be presented with this award, and I'm just glad that I am just able to be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Ms. Seward, Vice Chair Mister Warwick, board members greater Brunswick community. It is my pleasure to present the September Classified and Certified Employees of the Month coming from Brunswick High School. We are honored to select Mister Earl Wilson as the BHS September Classified Employee of the Month. Mister Wilson, will you please join me up front? His hard work and dedication and positive attitude make him a tremendous impact on the BHS school community every single day. Mister Wilson consistently goes above and beyond in maintaining a clean, safe, and welcoming environment for students, staff, and visitors. He responds quickly to any need, whether it's setting up for events, and I can attest to that because I know that I've ran him crazy for the back-to-school convocation. I'm very particular about where the chairs and the tables go. Mister Wilson really helped us to make that a success. Addressing unexpected situations or ensuring classrooms and common areas are ready for student learning. His attention to detail and reliability give everyone a peace of mind when they come in contact with Mister Wilson. Beyond his duties, Mister Wilson is always willing to lend a helping hand, greet others with kindness, and model a strong work ethic. His pride in his work is evident in the quality of our facilities and in the respect he shows to all members of our school community. Because of his professionalism, dedication, and genuine care for our school community, Mister Wilson is truly deserving of this recognition as the Classified Employee of the Month for Brunswick County Public Schools on behalf of Brunswick High School. Thank you, Mister Wilson. Next up, we have our Certified Employee of the Month. This employee is holding two positions here in her support level. We ask that Ms. Shawnee Parker please join me at the front. Brunswick County Public Schools proudly recognizes Ms. Shawnee Parker as our September Certified Employee of the Month. Ms. Parker is the Title I teacher at Russell Middle School, but she provides extensive instructional support at Brunswick High School. Her commitment to supporting teachers and students has always had a positive impact on our school community. Ms. Parker has quickly earned the trust and respect of students and colleagues through her adaptability, her enthusiasm, and genuine passion for education. She brings heart, integrity, and a strong work ethic, approaching every task with efficiency, precision, and positivity. She plays an important role in shaping a collaborative school culture, which is seen as she works at both Russell Middle School and Brunswick High School, by researching best practices, sharing resources, and tailoring support to meet the division needs of teachers. Through her guidance, instruction, she has become even more engaging, and she provides leading challenges and expectations for students through outcomes. Always willing to assist others, Ms. Parker promotes unity, uplifts colleagues, and adds an overall strength of our school community. You can always count on her to give you a warm hug, or when she sees her student, she says, "Baby, what you got going on today?" It is without hesitation that we recognize Ms. Shawnee Parker as the Certified Employee of the Month for Brunswick High School. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Mister Chair, if it pleases the board, could we take a brief recess to give the board members an opportunity to greet the honorees and our student of the month?
Absolutely.
All right, all right.
Came back.
It is, it's just cool.
Super. Been awhile. I haven't watched them.
Thank you all in the audience for bearing with us during that brief recess. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Madam Clerk?
At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the Board and administration. Public comments at Board meetings are just one of many avenues for communication, and the Board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is allowed up to three minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation, it will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Joanna Thomas Pritchett.
Good evening. Dr. Carter, Superintendent, all the Board members, I don't have the three minutes, so I gotta roll. Okay, so I stand before you this evening to put it out there that we have an important need of school buses. Just as it is important to have teachers, I, and I know, don't ask me how I know, feel that buses are a very, very immediate need. They go hand in hand. Bus drivers transport our children to school, and without them, it's just not gonna happen. I want to highlight the frustration it is from top to bottom when you have to try to figure out what you may drive sometimes. We are down to our last, I believe, spare bus, and I can't stop thinking about like the what-if, like what happens when we don't have a spare bus to drive. The wear and tear on our buses, some of our buses have over 200,000 miles on them, and that's a lot of miles for a school bus. That lets you know that there's a lot of wear and tear, and a lot of these buses, we, we travel, whether it's athletics, double routes sometimes, after-school programs, so it's a lot of, you know, running. And it runs the buses there, especially, I mean, we live in Brunswick County, so a lot of the back rows especially, they are really like tearing our buses down. And I feel like if they're already worn out, it's just gonna get worse over time. In my opinion, I feel that if we have two or three old buses, I feel like, like older buses, I'm sorry, I feel like they should be the ones used as like the spares, because you don't, they won't get the amount of wear and tear that, you know, we're doing as we drive them every day. I'm not sure about the budget, but I come to you pleading, asking that, that's something that, take it to the table, because it's a need, it's an immediate need. It's not like I'm standing up here saying, "Hey, just talking, blowing air." It is an immediate need. We have, I'm sorry, I had to turn it over. I'm sorry. Oh, so, I mean, we get the feedback a lot via social media, unfortunately, from parents who kinda think that we are in charge of, we don't have any control over, you know, the way our buses are run down. We do the best that we can, but I do feel, again, that if we put a couple more buses in the rotation, then we can probably, again, use the others that are worn down a lot as the spares. So I hope that you consider it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No one else signed up to speak?
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is our Instruction Report. Dr. Hampton?
Good evening. Dr. Carter, Mr. Warwick, school board members, community members, good evening.
Good evening.
We are glad to be here to provide you with some instructional updates. And Ms. Sourd, Chair Sourd, good morning. I mean, good evening. Okay, so we are here to provide you some updates for the month of September and what we have been doing thus far. So we can go ahead and get started. All right, so for our strategic plan alignment, as always, we make sure that we are following our mission and our vision. I know we went over that earlier, so we don't need to go through that. And there you have it, the phenomenal Department of Instruction. So this year, we added some additional team members, so I will just go through so everyone knows who is who. So of course, Victoria Hampton, then we have, I don't know which, Ms. Bianca Elementary, then we have, and she's our Elementary Title I Coach, Instructional Coach, then we have Mrs. Wesson, who is our Secondary Instructional Coach, then we have Mrs. Denise Person, she is our Exceptional Ed Instructional Specialist. We also have Ms. Davis, she is our ITRT for the Division. We have Ms. Alston, who is our Elementary Reading Specialist for the Division, and then we also have, lastly, we have Ms. Thomas, who can come, come, just come closer. Embrace us, baby, we here together. Okay, and so she is for our Secondary Reading Specialist. So I know that when you all probably received the presentation, you were like, "Whoa," right? I get it. So we definitely understand, but the team knows we like to over-communicate so that there are no questions, or if you have questions, we're providing those responses. So I will not go through everything, but just a few that I would like to highlight includes our administrators, our administrators at the elementary schools. Our administrators, as well as their Title I teachers, have now gone through the process to learn how to provide the state observation assessment to their, for their schools. So instead of me going in there and observing, I know that they know their teachers, they know their student, they know their environment, so they have been certified, or they're getting, they're in the process of getting certified. So that is a big plus for us. Next one, I know you all are aware about Starbase Academy at Blackstone. We are in the process of still making sure that everything's in place to get started in December of this year. Next one, our PLCs with targeted updates for our schools. We have been very intentional about the PLCs that are taking place this year, because we wanna make sure that they are targeted and support the needs of not only our students, but for our teachers. We're hearing what the teachers are telling us they need, and we are making sure that we are providing that for them. And there are some additional ones, I won't go into full detail, there was one more I wanted to acknowledge. Okay, yes, for iReady, I know the year before last, the Division was using iReady, last year, we went with Star, but then, just based on feedback that we were hearing from everyone, we went back to iReady. So we have iReady for math, and we also have it for reading. We also, not only do we have that as a diagnostic, but it also comes with the teacher toolkit, which provides individualized lessons for teachers to provide for their whole class or the individual students. And students also have their own personalized instructional pathway that is developed. So when they, including that into their small group rotation that they're having, flexible grouping, and teachers are able to use the information from iReady to provide support to their kids. So as far as our continued implementations, we are continuing with Lexia Inspire, our monthly collaborative, collaborative planning meetings, and now, our team is joining with the admin. We had two days of a phenomenal training for our admins, talking about data, talking about how they're able to look at their data to form the support that they will put in place for their staff as well. We can go to the next slide. All right, so the team will talk about the data, and then, as an additional treat, we're gonna have each principal come to speak to their data. They understand our timing, but I definitely feel like it's important, you know, as we are representing their school, and they are representing their school, we want them to come and share with you where their data is, and what are their plans for next steps to support the needs for our kids.
Good evening, Board. We will begin this afternoon, well, this evening with our Division Diagnostic Data for Reading and for Math. For Reading, if you look at the image that's there, we decided that we wanted to give you two forms of data to reiterate the importance of our intervention and our approach as we move forward. So for the district, you can see the numbers, the green with the black indicates students that are well above grade level, the green, they're on grade level, the yellow, which we'll talk about that in a few moments, they are at least one grade level below. We have our red, where the students are at least about two grade levels below, and then the red with the black slashes indicates that they are further, more than two to three grade levels below. If you look at the tiered chart, because you know our motto here in Brunswick, is that we are always using the tiered approach. So red, right now, our motto is that we're gonna embrace the red, because the red indicates where we are and where we will be going. So at the beginning of the year, we have approximately 45% of our students that are at risk for Tier III intervention. And I wanna reiterate that it says "at risk," "at risk," so we can bridge those gaps, and our Reading Specialist Team will share additional interventions that we have in place. But I want you to zone in on the yellow, because it says about a little over 400 students are one grade level below. Typically, we have, you know, had larger numbers of students, so if we can get those students to actually move into those green areas, that is our targeted goal. We will do this with intervention. We are also promoting reading plans and writing plans across the district. So we are not gonna continue to do writing in isolation or reading in isolation, we're gonna do the integrated reading and writing approach. And at the elementary level, as well as the secondary level, we have created strategic integrated reading and writing plans that our teachers will follow as they are providing explicit and targeted instruction in the area of reading. As you know, we've had new standards in reading, and we are addressing those, providing professional development to our teachers, as VDOE has shared different platforms and different resources that our teachers can use to improve our reading skills. We are promoting reading across the content area, interdisciplinary studies and activities through project-based learning. And finally, we are continuing this year in our partnership with Malcolm Mitchell, in the reading program that he has, he will be visiting all of our schools, and his motto, "When I say read, you say succeed." So we can see our data here, and we're working with our Reading Specialist Team to make this happen. And any questions at this time about the reading data?
Okay, surprise, I'm here to speak to mathematics. Good afternoon or evening, everyone. As we look at our iReady mathematics data that's presented in front of us, if we take a look on the left-hand side of the screen, that's where you're gonna see your five levels of tier data, just like Ms. Hawkins-Wesson was explaining. You see your two different color greens, you see your yellow, which is focused on one grade level below, and then you see your red, which is comprised of either a lighter red or a darker red. Of course, what our goal is, is to make sure that that red is shrinking, the yellow is growing, and the green is also growing at the same time. One of our goals is to build on the foundations of math, as we have gone through this data and triangulated it and disaggregated it, one of the things that we have noticed is a lack in the area of foundational skills, even in mathematics. So once we have targeted that, we are ready to move forward strongly with numbers and operations, because that's one of the domains that we have seen the most weakness in, and if we can strengthen that domain, as that domain touches all of the other domains, such as algebraic thinking, measurement, and geometry, those types of things, we think that we will definitely see that shrinkage, and the red, the yellow growing larger, and then, of course, the green going larger. We definitely are continuing to have small, flexible groups, lots of hands-on activities, STEM collaboration, math manipulatives, all different kinds of things coming into the academic area of math. We are continuing our ZERN usage, which you'll hear a little bit later from our amazing administrators, how that's being used and utilized in their buildings already at the beginning of the school year. And we do have a new program that's getting ready to join us, I'm not gonna go into detail about that, we'll talk about that a little bit later, but that's gonna be exciting for our kiddos as well. But I do want you guys to understand that where we are is where we should be. We just had a visit from, iReady came, and they presented to us, and if all of our data was in the green at this point, then that would mean that we're looking at data without much fidelity. So we're looking at this, and we're seeing it, we're embracing the red, as my partner, Ms. Hawkins-Wesson said, and we're just looking forward to the growth through our amazing programs and our collaboration with our teachers, our administrators, and most importantly, our students. So with that being said, I think you would probably like to hear from each school to see how they are doing, so I'm gonna turn it over to Maharon Powelton to come up next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, before the administrators come up, I do, I might do have a question before they present. I don't know if this would be to Dr. Hampton or the rest of the staff. In regards to this diagnostic Division data, I just wanted to ask a question in regards to whether the delay in the Chromebooks that our students receive would, that have affected the data that we're about to receive from the different administrators?
Yes, so it would impact, right now, just the high school, as far as where they are, because they were still trying to retrieve, getting the Chromebooks. We have been in communication with technology, the admin team, as well as Dr. Carter, to discuss how we can ensure that this does not happen again. You know, because it did hold us up, and it impacts the overall. So while, although this is data that we have currently, as of this afternoon, we know that by the time they are finished this week, our data is going to be updated so that we can share it out with everyone.
Okay, great. I just wanna make sure we, as Board members, that we take that into consideration, I guess, before the high school presents, if it's not affecting the elementary school, because I know that that was a challenge, and I appreciate you stating that we're trying to figure out what we can do in order to fix that, whether we have to make sure that our administrators have loners in place so this does not happen again. So we can get more up-to-date data for our kids.
Definitely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
No problem, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Our data is, we are 100% complete with testing at Maharon Powelton, we finished last Wednesday or Thursday. We're proud to say our red is, it's 30%, but it's smaller than what it has been in the past, so our green and yellow, to me, look phenomenal, we're at 70%, and if we're taking SOLs today, we're gonna have that 70% or better pass rate, so we're excited.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you. A few things with our reading data, our phonological awareness, we have a lot of students that tested out of that, so that's the gray part of that bar on the screen. So many of our students don't need phonological awareness now, so that means we're building that good base. And we have, we have several other areas that, you know, it's over 50% green, so we're gonna focus more on the comprehension. Our students appear to have a good grasp on the fiction and nonfiction, so we're gonna do more with the comprehension piece of the fiction and nonfiction to prepare them for the SOLs in the spring. Next slide will be our math, kinda the same picture. Our green is a little smaller, but the green and yellow together are still compromising 70% of our students, so we're still at the 30% for our red. Our ZERN program, we are, 90% of our students have started working in the ZERN program as of last week, and we have had, our fifth-grade class students averaged 154 minutes last week on ZERN, which is phenomenal. We're asking them to do 90 minutes, and they averaged 154 minutes, and they averaged four lessons of growth during the week, so that's phenomenal, yes. Next slide will be our next steps, and, you know, we've talked about some of the things already, some of the presentations you've already had, but we're gonna work on our data analysis and incorporate whatever is in the literacy plans for our students in their, in the reading program. We are going to do our best to connect things to the real-world life experiences, because it makes it more meaningful and the students can remember it better when we do that. We've got a lot of differentiated instruction going on and lots of hands-on activities, small groups, which is the name of the game in this day and time, to capture their interest and keep them engaged in learning. Okay, any questions?
Amen.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here today. I don't know about standing in front of y'all and talking, but I'll make it through. Okay, as for our data, we have for, look, I'm struggling to see what's up there, reading. Okay, we have, for reading, we have 63% of our students who are in that on level, above level, or one grade level behind, which we, again, think that we are doing a phenomenal job. With that, we are definitely gonna make sure that number grows, that we move some of our students who are two grade levels behind, or three levels behind, that we move them up during the year. We have 37% of our students who have fallen in that red, and really only 16 who are three, three grade levels behind, so that means that we, the teachers are all working extremely hard, as we know, they are across the county. If you look at it, the students, again, as Ms. Bowen just said, they are testing out of phonological awareness, which means they have that basic, they're getting that in kindergarten, and we just need to work on, they're also doing really well on their vocabulary, and so comprehension is more of what we need to, you can read now, you can decode, but are you understanding what you're reading? So we have So we have to work on that, and as far as reading, nonfiction items, things that most people don't like to read, that's included in me. So we have to help them with that. For our math, we have 64% of the students who are in the yellow or the green and 36 who are in that red, with 19% of them being in the one who's two grade levels or below. So that means we have, I believe that's 33 students, so out of 250 students, we have 33 students who are three grades below, and we need to work with them intensely, as we're going to do with everybody. We're working with ZERN, we had ZERN last year, and from our ZERN students, all the students who did, completed there, we started ZERN kind of late last year, so everybody was not able to complete those three lessons a week, but the ones who did, did pass the SOL. We started early this year, we've already had our meeting with the ZERN company, we, 100% of our teachers logged on last year, last week, and our students, so they've already started to use ZERN. And with ZERN, I mentioned to the ZERN person that I wanted to do, we're doing reading plans and we're doing writing plans, and I said, well, you know what, I think I want to do math plans with my students so we can really focus on them, where they are individually. And she was so excited, she said, "Great, I got a workshop for you." So she's coming to do a workshop for us in November on digging into that data, and, but we are going to be digging into that before she gets there to work with the students. Our next steps are, as you, as you've heard, we're going to work with ZERN. We have weekly PLC meetings where the teachers are going to be looking at that data, really analyzing what, what's going on here, how can we help these students do better, and talk about behavior? How are the students behaving in your class? What are you doing with the students in your class that I'm not doing that might help them be successful? So we're looking at, and socio-emotionally, we're looking at the whole child. How can we help this child become successful? We are definitely working on our Virginia Literacy Act, making sure we're following what they put forth in that, and ensuring that our students are getting that foundation so that they can be successful in high school and in life. More hands-on activities, when we, I, I, for one, I guess I'm old-school, I was happy that we didn't have the technology books, my Chromebooks at the beginning of the school year, because that made the kid teachers go back to, okay, let's, let me get some hands-on activity, let me do this, let me do something different besides just the Chromebook, and it was exciting to watch, and just to remind us that we can work without that Chromebook, you know, we can survive without the computers.
That's a true.
And also doing our walkthroughs and giving the teachers feedbacks. Last week, Ms. Jones and I walked through the classes and we left a note for every teacher on something positive, so we're using our positive incentives for our teachers and our students, and letting everybody know that they're special. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Okay, so this is our, our reading data for our reading, and like everybody else that came prior to me, the phonological awareness says that's the strongest where our kids are, and I think we have 63%, I can't really see that, I think it's 63% in the yellow and the green, and 37 in the red. And the majority of our students are on target to be successful in reading this school year. The largest group is one grade behind, which would be our tier-two students. That's promising because with consistent small group intervention and instruction, many of those, most of those should catch up this year. The tier-three, 36%, and these are at-risk kids, so we know that because they're struggling, we have to address them immediately.
Can we go through the math?
Okay, and for the math... Okay, just a second, I can't see. Don't laugh. Okay, and for the math, like Ms. Bianco said, we have to ensure that our numbers and operations are stronger because math is foundational, and the kids need numbers and operations in order to do the algebra part, the measurement, the geometry, so we have to work a little harder on, on doing those things. And what does this data mean? It means consistent targeted instruction in small groups will push most of these students to their full-grade level mastery. In short, Tetera has a solid majority within reach of success, but the challenge is reducing the tier-three group while expanding tier-one through both intervention and enrichment. And our next steps are basically what everybody else is doing, data-driven instruction, literacy support. This year, Ms. Austin and as well as Ms. Thomas are coming in, working with students, so we know that our reading scores should, should increase, aligning all of our systems and making sure that we have strong instructional strategies. Basically, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board Chair, Madam Seward, Vice Chair, Mr. Ward, Board Members, Dr. Carter, and those assembled today.
Good evening.
Now, for our data, first up is our reading diagnostic data. Right now, we have about 59% of our students that are two grade levels or more below. We have about 21% that's one grade level below, and then we have about 20% that are on grade level or mid or above grade level. I'm impressed with our phonics and our high-frequency words, I think we're hiding the green on those categories, but we can improve on our vocabulary and our comprehension, and that's for our reading. And now for our math. We have about 60% for our math that are two grade levels or more below. We will work on that, and I'll talk about the next step once we get to that slide. We have about 24% that are just one grade level below, and then we have 15% that are on grade level or mid or above grade level. And you can see the categories below that, of course, we can improve on, which is our number and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement, and data and geometry. And as far as our next steps, we have already started to begin some of these things. We've already had meaningful dialogue in our PLC meetings with interpreting the data from our iReady diagnostics. We're also targeting, or we're identifying those students in those groups that need targeted instruction. We have done extensive walkthroughs already to begin the year with Ms. Williams, myself, and Ms. Parker. Also, we have done pre-conferences and observations with teachers, and with that being said, we have provided immediate feedback to our teachers for instruction and planning and delivery. We also have started our grade-level meetings and our department meetings as well, so that will combine with our vertical alignment collaboration. Also, for our reading, we're providing focused, strategic, high-quality instruction and intervention in reading and comprehension according to the Virginia Literacy Act requirements. We're going to provide increased focus for student proficiency, proficiency, excuse me, in reading and comprehending a variety of literary, literacy, and informational texts that have higher complexity and range. And also for our math, we are starting again this year with our intervention block, so it's about 40 minutes per day. Once we identify those students, we'll be using our advanced tiers models, using ZERN, which all the other schools have mentioned as well, and I'm impressed, we have gotten off to a great start with using ZERN. And I want to say, I think Ms. Finney mentioned it, we got into a little bit late start last year, so this year, we're starting off strong with our ZERN, with our usage time and our completion of lessons, so I'm proud to say that I think with our usage of ZERN, we improve our math proficiency.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
I want to say thank you to Ms. McMillan, who shared that there's always a challenge at the high school, particularly as it relates to diagnostic testing, trying to get the upper-level kids to buy into the diagnostic test, and primarily because there's a grade attached to it. However, we still were able to get some data. We got perhaps 74%, and we still got another 25, 26% still to test. Hopefully, we finish that up this week, and we'll have a little bit more finer details as it relates to our testing. Right now, reading stands at about 65% below where we want it to be in the red, with about 25, 35% of those in yellow and green. One of the things that I want to state as it relates to the reading piece, historically, our comprehension as well as our vocabulary has been a challenge, and what we've done more so this year is work with our strategic planning as well as our PLCs. A special shout-out to our instructional coaches and what they have done in terms of making adjustments ongoing. For example, what we've been doing during our data meetings, we've been having, not just meetings just to discuss the data, but if there are some needs in a particular area as it relates to weekly testing, then what they're doing is trying to make the tests, trying to make the adjustments ongoing. Additionally, we have some challenges, for example, in school too. If we didn't have any teachers there, because of our PLCs, we're able to target that as well, so with our instructional coaches, with administration, as well as with our department chairs and the teachers, we have more of a collaborative approach, and we're able to identify some challenges or those gaps early on, and so we're very pleased with that. As relates to our math, several things stood out with math. That's usually one of our strongest areas, but as you know, we had a new test this year, in algebra as well as geometry, and although the numbers are not where we want them to be, but using some of the support pieces that we all, most of the other schools already mentioned, we plan to do that. And one of the things that we plan to do as we start the year, and this will go into our next, our next steps, and that is actually coming out the gate fighting, and that is, we will be starting our tutoring beginning next week, the 16th. We're fortunate enough to get some Gear Up grant monies, and so our teachers were excited about that, and we have about 60 to 70 students already registered for that. We've talked to transportation, so we're not waiting, we're not waiting to the final results, but we want to get into it right now. Mr. Mays, you can move to the next steps. Additionally, we plan to continue to hold strategic and targeted PLCs and data meetings to determine our next steps. Additionally, we want to have some PDs, ongoing PDs, doing our weekly and bi-weekly our data meetings. One of the things that's been very helpful with our instructional coaches, that being able to provide that ongoing PD helps the teachers for intervention, for remediation as well as our reteaching. And lastly, one of the things that everybody's doing is continue the data-driven instruction practices, and this is not only done weekly, but it's done bi-weekly, and it's going to help, and we'll see more of alignment come benchmark time. And once we finish our diagnostic testing, hopefully this week, we'll be able to see more of our, not only our data aligning with what we hope to be doing our SOL testing as well as our benchmarks, so we're excited about that. We're seeing the data move where we want it to be, but more importantly, we got more of a collaborative approach, and we're hoping that that will cause us to be successful in the long run. Any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair. Good evening. Mr. Ward, Board Members, Dr. Carter, community at large. Our literacy partners are Dr. Blanchett and Becky Scott. They, we've been in communication with them since last year. They provided some professional development for us, and they also provided some pre-service professional development for us this year as well. We are in constant contact with them. They have weekly office hours, and they give us updates with monthly updates, which is going to transition to quarterly beginning in December. And so, the VLA Quick Peak is a link there for you for the Virginia Literacy Act, which encompasses grades kindergarten through eighth grade. Grades four through eight were added, that, that was the expansion for this year, and as you can see the visual that's on, on the screen, where our fail below, the criteria for the VLA, for vowels four through eight were fail below, basic, and fail basic on the SOL test. This, and also for our audio and read-aloud students who fell into those categories, as well as our read-aloud students who passed the SOL test. So, based on the results from the vowel screener, that will determine who will receive those student reading plans. The mastery levels for grades four through eight are well below, adequate and approaching and adequate, so based on those results, the students who fall in that well below, and they will have instructional indicators for those particular areas. That's a little different from grades K through three where it's high risk, moderate risk, and low risk, so their risk bands are just, the naming conventions are a little different. And so, that's what's new and upcoming with VLA and the vowels, and our next slide, please. So on this next slide, you will see a sample of the student reading plan for grades four through eight, again, just slightly different from grades K through three. The guidelines are linked there, the guidelines for this document is in the link as well as the sample plan there, so we will continue providing those instructional protocols for the students who qualify for those reading plans, and also provide contact with the families to make sure that they are aware of those online resources that they can use to support the students when they are at home. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Ruth, and she's going to discuss the next slide.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to point out, so this year, everything went into the system called VA Connect. It's the holding ground for three of the state data collection tools that is utilized by the state. It's holding the LINKB5, which is the birth, the Virginia Quality Birth to Five, is holding VOWS, which is the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System for pre-K through grade eight, and it's holding the VKRP, the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program that collects mathematics, social skills, self-regulation, and mental health well-being data in the pre-K and kindergarten. Within there, we were required to take the VOWS certification for all teachers from K through eight. In order for you to administer the test this year, especially for grades four through eight, you had to take a certification course. It was about 2.5 hours. I mean, you had to submit the certificate in order to be allowed to administer the assessment to the students. Any new teachers or anybody new that was going to administer the test, whether it's a paraprofessional, exceptional ed teacher, or a new teacher to the district, they also had to take the tutorial and submit their certificate. September 15th, that's when VKRP will begin for the pre-K and kindergarten teachers, and they will start working...
Oh, no, it's September 8th.
Sorry, September 8th, that was when they began their, today. That's when they began their, their window for the VKRP. And I think that's basically it that I have for that particular slide. I did want to make a mention, there's no more slides for me. I did want to make a mention, because I want to talk to the reading data, I know this is off-slide, but I did want to talk to the reading data for the district and put some things into perspective in regards to Spire. Spire was our Phase One, and it only, because that was my push, and it dealt with the foundational skills. So when you looked at the data that was presented in iReady, that was the first three sections of the iReady data, and when you look at it across the district, school by school, you would notice that that data is eliminated.
Yes.
It has definitely increased, and if you go to two years ago, where we had iReady, and you compare that data to this data, there has been a remarkable increase in that data, and we are ready for Phase Two, which is the language comprehension side. We have done a 100% turnaround. Even though you see red, it's red for a different reason, okay? We are not red for decoding, we are red- We are red for the second side of Scarborough's rope. We are red for language comprehension, which means that we have made tremendous growth from decoding. We are no longer in Phase One of the reading struggle. We are going into Phase Two. So as a district, kudos, yes. We have made a one-hundred percent turnaround, because we are not stuck at looking at how to get words off the page. We are going into Phase Two of the reading struggle, okay? Which means now we are age-appropriate, grade-appropriate. And now, as I have been stuck in the middle school, right? I can now do what I need to do at the middle school level, and do what I'm supposed to be doing, and inching closer to more grade-level content, okay? So I need to put that out there, that we are inching more and closer to where we're supposed to be. I'm no longer looking at cat and hat at the middle school, okay? So I just want to say that we are moving closer, even though you see all the red, we are moving much more closer to where we are supposed to be, okay? Thank you.
I just want to say usa. USA, because Ms. McMillan here was sitting concerned, but I was still hopeful that we are embracing the red. But that off-the-chart, that wasn't on here, is what I wanted to hear. So I want to say thank you for sharing it, because that just gave me more hope. And I appreciate, I already know that this is the dream team. We know that already. But I just want to say thank you so much for sharing that, because I was sitting here a little bit, probably getting emotional a little bit over here. But you just gave me a usa to this, because that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
It's red to the Phase Two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're back.
Phase Two.
Yes. So we're going to begin with just elaborating more briefly on accreditation and accountability difference, and explaining that our district still falls under accreditation, although we have a new accountability system based upon points in all academic areas, as well as in like our chronic absenteeism and in our graduation rate. So at this time, Mrs. B is going to share accreditation and accountability differences.
All right, so at the very top, it's kind of highlighted out, because we have so much on each slide. We know, as Dr. Hampton said, we like to over-communicate. But that very top indicator that says Virginia Department of Education, that's a timeline. And that timeline is indicative of when the state plans on making sure that we have all of the data from the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year, ready for us to view and to share with the public. At this point, we do not. Based on that timeline, which is linked in your presentation, we should be getting data by the end of September, and hopefully being able to share that out as soon as possible. But again, I am going to put a disclaimer out there that DOE is sometimes a little behind with adhering to timelines. So please bear with us. As soon as we get the information, we'll be tickle pink to share it back with you guys. We will get two different ratings, so we will get an accreditation rating and accountability rating. Accreditation is, those are our inputs. So what are we inputting into our students? How are we paying attention to our instructional programs? How often are our kids at school? What does that attendance look like? How are we dealing with behavior? So what are we inputting at each school level? The output, of course, is our accountability, which is our performance and where we end up being at. Our accountability will be based on the school performance framework, in which we shared with you guys last year, where our students are, we're getting, earning points for where we are, and then we'll obviously get a ranking. And that ranking will either be distinguished, on-track, off-track, or needs intensive support, obviously. If you are looking for information regarding the eight accreditation pieces, those are on the link on the very bottom there, that very bottom black link right there. And on the right-hand side, you can see the difference between accountability and accreditation. Accountability is going to be what determines where we are, whether we are distinguished, whether we are on-track, whether we are off-track. It will also determine our funding and our federal accountability, whether we have TSI schools, CSI schools, or ATS I schools. But we don't have that information yet, but we did want to share what we do have, which are the updates through the timeline and that school accreditation and accountability information that we have. Next slide, please, Mr. Mays. Okay, so I am, and I know Ms. Hawkins-Weston is as well, and I was on the phone with everyone I knew that I could possibly share this information with. And this is true. I'm trying to get people to answer the phone, and I'm like, I do end up getting Dr. Carter. He's, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute, just say it. Because I was talking, I had a conversation with Matt Hurt. Dr. Matt Hurt is the, he is in charge of the Curriculum Director of CIP, in which we go through all of our pacing and everything with, for Brunswick County this year, starting in grades K all the way up through twelve. And as you can see on the board, Matt shared with us that thirteen divisions in Virginia produce the highest ranking in SOL pass rates. Now, this is from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, from two thousand and six through twenty-twenty-five. This means that the pass rates that the state has already calculated and has already shared, those pass rates are significant, because those are the highest pass rates rankings in Brunswick County's history. So what we did last year was the highest. So, I mean, I'm like in the, I'm at the house like, oh, my gosh, Doug, are you kidding me? I mean, I'm cheering, and I'm like, will somebody answer the phone? Please talk to me. So what that means in a nutshell is that Brunswick County's pass rate improvements were better than one hundred and three other divisions across the state of Virginia, which speaks volumes. I mean, yes, meaning that our improvement kept us at twenty-eighth in the state when we're talking about making instructional gains in pass rates. In comparison to the state of Virginia, Ms. Hawkins-Weston, what were our pass rate gains in comparison to Virginia?
Yes, so our pass rates in comparison to Virginia was two point eight one. And it says Brunswick maintained its ranking that we had. Remember, we shared that last year? We showed the growth and the ranking that we had. We are still ranking of one, out of one hundred and, out of one hundred and thirty-one schools. We are one hundred and nine. We are maintaining that. And that's what we meant, you know, by embracing the red. What we saw last year was that, the morale. We talk about social and emotional learning of our students, but we also have to pour into the social and emotional well-being of our teachers. So Amy and I, when we did our first PD, we wore red to let them know that it's okay, because it's given us the direction of where we are going. So that's why we started tonight with embracing the red, because we wanted, we knew that Ruth would share what we'd done in reading, but we also knew that we would also share what we'd done in our SOL pass rate. In addition to that, it required us to make important and strategic instructional shifts. So SIP, the Comprehensive Instructional Program, we got our teachers to buy in to those resources and to use them with fidelity. We also attended several PD sessions that were organized and structured by SIP. And the very own dream team are members of the regional, Region Eight Leaders Academy of Teams, where we facilitated PD across the region. So we, we know that we see red, but the red is just showing where we're going. And that red is going to diminish, and we will see green and yellow, or more green in that. So we were just so excited. Amy was about to jump out of her skin.
I, I couldn't control it, because, and as I was having the conversation, even, even Dr. Hurt, I mean, he was like, Amy, because we're on a first-name basis, he was like, Amy, this is, this is amazing. And I was like, I know, I work for Brunswick County. Don't you know it? And I'm just, I think we're just excited in the direction that we're going, what CIP brings us, the efforts and the dedication of all of our teachers and our administrators, of course, our instructional leader, and our acting superintendent, Dr. Carter, to give us the opportunity to put all of these things in play. We even, this year for the first time, we are implementing, it was mentioned earlier, we have a BCPS writing plan. I mean, we're putting a focus on writing, because we need our students to be able to communicate through writing. So we've got lots of endeavors that we're working on. And as we are embracing that red, we're also seeing this green on the screen that is showing us the growth that we're making. And we're just tickle pink and so proud of our students for all that they have done. So, woo-hoo for that. The next couple of slides, all the way through, I believe, slide, is it thirty-five or thirty-six? Those are for your reference. The next slide that will actually be presented will be our Division Next Steps by Dr. Hampton. The other slides, you guys have already seen before. We shared them out last year. We just wanted to make sure that you had them as a reminder as you were looking through the data. And then, of course, if you have any questions, know that we're always available to answer them, okay? Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm back. So as you all know, we have quite a bit of information to share, and it is definitely difficult to try to condense it, but also pass along the message. So the message is, we're growing, right? And we're growing in a positive way. It is definitely exciting to see that when the PLCs are hap, the PLC meetings are happening, they're very intentional. And for me, our team motto, our department motto, is to ignite, inspire, and empower. And so they know. I'm constantly asking, who did you empower today? What did you do to support the next person? And I feel like we are definitely heading in the right direction. So lots of information to share. We, you know, we didn't want to take up the whole evening, but we may dedicate one evening just to instruction, because it's so much to share. But as far as our next steps, based on our diagnostic, we do know that we did have some dilemmas as it pertained to technology, getting students the Chromebooks, especially at the middle, I mean, excuse me, at the high school level. But just like Dr. Thornhill mentioned, getting that buy-in from the students, right? And so the buy-in happens from the teachers and the families, right? Because me, as a parent, my child knows, get it done, right? And because at the end of the day, you're, you know, we have to get the kids to understand that your data, what you do, impacts the entire division. So it's not just for the school. This is an impact to everyone. Down to the last minute of getting this presentation, you know, I'm calling Dr. Thornehill. He's sending messages and everything. So we're doing everything. Everyone is all hands on deck to ensure that our students are getting what they need. So as far as our next steps, we are going to continue with our monthly VTSS meetings and school leadership team meetings. I was intentional this year about making sure that each school is having a school leadership meeting. And that incorporates the principal, whether it's the dean, assistant principal, Title I teams, instructional coach. But we actually need the school leadership team to talk about what's happening in the building on a weekly basis. So we're putting those in place. We're monitoring the data, having the monthly, well, actually, bi-weekly data meetings as well, along with our school support plans. And then making sure that what we're doing is aligning to what we put on paper. If we said we're going to do it, then that's what our focus needs to be. So, you know, the team knows fidelity. Everything, let's do everything with fidelity, because then there will be no room to ask any questions, because we've been following through. So continuing to provide professional development for our high-quality instructional materials, intentional professional development, also even our administrators. They may not really too much care for me right now, but they have been in lots of trainings, right? Administrators, okay, great. Right, but my, you know, I definitely want them to also have that ownership, because when they see it, they're able to speak to their team like, hey, this is where we are. And sometimes it just is that extra push to keep looking at your data, because then from there, you'll be able to have those meaningful, targeted, and intentional conversations with the teachers. We're also, it's not up there just yet, but we will also be implementing individualized coaching plans for those teachers that have been identified as needing that additional support, which is kind of already happening, but to actually have it on paper, because I want teachers to be able to refer to it as well. If they see their own growth, they're able to track it. They will get some more of that buy-in as it pertains to students. So continuing with, with PDs for differentiated instruction, weekly attendance meetings with attendance teams, Ms. Mallory's team, and then also ZERN. So this year, we were lucky. I know last year, Russell Middle School, as well as Red Oak, were the anchor schools. So I am very, I'm one to ask, can everybody get it? So they contacted me back to pick one school. So during that same email, I said, what about the other school? And they let that happen. So then I'm like, well, since we're at two, I want to be able to give this opportunity to everyone. So at this point, all five of our schools are considered anchor schools, which means that we'll get personalized coaching for each school. So I'm super excited about that, because last year was only the two. But they were able to say that, you know, and they're always giving Brunswick kudos on making sure our lessons are getting done, our teachers are logging in, and we're seeing that growth. It actually became some type of competition towards the end of last year, because I started sharing out to everybody, well, look where your students are at. Well, where are your students at? Just some fun, some fun competition, but it was great that they reached back out to us to offer us this opportunity. So I am excited about that. And then, lastly, I believe that's it, because it's, there's so many things. I think overall, I just want to emphasize that we do have an amazing instructional team. And, you know, to know that when we're having our own meetings, our long-drawn-out meetings, but when I get to go and see them in action at their PLC meetings and their data meetings, and they're literally repeating everything, like it's the same. So I gave them kudos last week, but even here, I just want to say, team, thank you. Y'all are phenomenal. I couldn't do it, right? I couldn't do it alone. And I definitely think that, you know, because they are invested, we're getting the investment of our teachers, everyone, you know. So our next push is to make sure that we're bringing our families along this ride with us. So when the families are a part of that, and they know, hey, this one point is counting towards the entire division, not just your individual child, but you're, you're, you're helping a bigger process. So that is it for our next steps. There are some additional on there, but you guys do have access to that. And so we are going to end today with our final summary, which states, you can go to the next slide up there. "Our commitment to instructional excellence continues to drive student growth and success. Through culturally responsive teaching, blended learning, strategic intervention processes, and targeted professional development, we are preparing students for a bright future. We appreciate the support of the school board as we work together to continue the vision of educating students, inspiring success, improving tomorrow." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And don't go away, because you're also up next with the SOQ compliance report.
Oh, it's still me, okay. Hi. Okay, so I am submitting this for approval. This is the SOQ School Equality Compliance Report. We are compliant in all areas. Me, Ms. Clary, and I did review going through each piece, and we were able to certify that we are compliant in all areas. So we are submitting that for approval by the board.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Mallory, attendance report? Followed by Ms. Pearson with the policy update.
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, other Board Members, and our Acting Superintendent. So just to give a little perspective on our report for this month, I want you to know that as Mr. Morgan comes forth to go through the data with you, our total enrollment is one thousand four hundred and twenty-three students. However, that also includes forty-two pre-K students, okay? So please keep that in mind, as we track in our division attendance for all students, all the way down to pre-K. Remember that every day matters, and attendance is very important. In regard to chronically absent, so when you look at the data this evening, know that any student with two or more absences is considered chronically absent, because we take ten percent of the attendance for our current amount of time in school. So as we move through the school year, the number of days that are required to be considered chronically absent will increase until we get to the end, where we'll be at eighteen days that the state looks at as being chronically absent. And then my last thing to note is that our Student Information System Specialist is working with our Kenvo company, and that's the company that sends out our messages, our A1C messages. So when you see the data, you're going to see little to no data in that area right now, as they are trying to work out a few kinks with the system and getting the as they are trying to work out a few kinks with the system and getting those messages to go out. So I'll turn it over now to Mr. Morgan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, um, we're going to start with our attendance data, uh, by school. Uh, we can see in, uh, we have the current enrollment column. Uh, and then we have, uh, numbers, uh, with two to seventeen, uh, days missed so far in, in that column. And the last one with, the last column with, um, eighteen or more, that's the column we want to stay away from. We don't even want to get close to that, okay? So, um, so, you know, we're working hard now, at the beginning of the year, to be sure that we, um, that we stay clear of that number. And then this, uh, the, uh, the next slide is, um, of course, our home visits. Um, unfortunately, we've had to do some home visits already. Um, and we, a little bit of a change, you know, this year, uh, we're doing our home visits not only for, um, for, um, days missed or attendance, but if we have students coming in late, leaving early, we want to have a conversation with those parents, uh, uh, so that they could, these children can be in school. And, you know, and so that's how we succeed, is to have our children in school where they can get the instruction that they need. Uh, and, um, Ms. Mallory has explained to you that our Kenvo system is down right now. But even though the Kenvo system is down, you can see our attendance clerks and our administrators, uh, they are making the calls. They, they're making the calls home. And, uh, in that last column, the truancy plans, you can see that we haven't had to do any truancy plans thus far. And we want to keep it that way, okay? Do we have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Here goes the actual agenda. Thank you.
The following policy is before you with a first read, um, with approval requested at the October meeting, and that is Policy GAC, Employee Social Media Use. This is a new policy, as well as Policy Regulation GAC dash R, which covers the regulations for guidance on the employee's social media use. And that is being listed as information only. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Clary will now provide our finance report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're going to take this report a little differently going forward. Um, before I begin, I wanted to make a few comments or key points. This presentation references fiscal year twenty-five. Since we've not completely closed out yet, my report shares how fiscal year twenty-five will end. Once the county closes fiscal year twenty-five, I'll be able to run reports and give you the same information for fiscal year twenty-six. Every year between July and September, we are running two fiscal years concurrently. We have received all of our accrued revenue that we were anticipating. Um, federal reimbursements came back earlier than in past years, so that's good. Um, I'd like to note that BCPS is lump funds, lump fund, lump sum funded by the Board of Supervisors, which means you'll see expenditure line items that are in the negative. Because we're lump sum funded, the county does not transfer between line items to cover these differences. They look at the bottom line. For fiscal year twenty-six, I've tried to adjust the line item amounts to account for the over and shorts in the line amounts. And another key point is approximately sixty-five percent of our operating budget is payroll and benefits. The first slide is a snapshot of our fiscal year twenty-five revenue in all the major categories. The first column is the appropriated amount, the second column is the year-to-date received, and the balance remaining in each category. The second slide are our fiscal year twenty-five expenditures in the same format. The, you can see each line, the appropriation, the year-to-date summary, and the balance remaining. And then the far right col- column is the department. The third slide is an unaudited fiscal year recap for, for twenty-five. And you, you can see our revenue ending six-thirty, plus our accrued revenues for July, August, and September, for a total revenue amount of twenty-six million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Our expenses, as of September the eighth, when we ran the report, uh, twenty-seven million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand. So you can see what we needed to reconcile the year-end revenue minus expenses. We have a local transfer, the remaining local transfer will happen when the audit happens in October, and that's another seven hundred and one thousand dollars. And we have construction carryover funds that we spent that will get transferred in, and we will have a balanced budget. And these are unaudited figures, so they could change slightly based on the audit. Our fiscal year twenty-five ADM ended at thirteen hundred and one students. As of August the thirty-first, our finance ADM was one thousand three hundred and four. And our fiscal year twenty-six budget was built on twelve hundred and ninety-three. So we're okay so far. Are there any questions?
No.
No, I just wanted to say, um, thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Clary. I think it's crucial for enabling informed decision-making, ensuring our financial transparency, and providing accountability to the community. Um, it allows Board members and the public to grasp the district's financial health and the rationale behind its spending so we can look at our business needs, like we heard with citizen comments tonight as well, too. So I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And just one other point, um, Ms. Clary said earlier, she expects the auditors to be here the first week of October, so. Board members, the, um, next item is just beginning a discussion, and Mr. Mays, if you can load up that policy, FFA, naming school facilities, uh, that policy is already in our current adoption of policies. But the new school building is under construction and will be completed soon. Up to this point, we have referred to that building as the new elementary school project, but it does not have an official name. I'm not asking for a name tonight, but I do need you all to, um, start the discussion about the name of that school building. And it will need to have, uh, an official name for signage purposes, for things that are going to be attached to the building, whether it's going to be what blank blank elementary school. I just need to know from the school board the direction that, um, the board would like to see us move in so that we can officially name this building.
I appreciate that as well. Do you, and I'm just speaking just as, as a member, do you think that we probably can send surveys out to the students or to the, you know, just to the students, the teachers, just to get, hear their feedback as well, so we can take that into consideration? To see, you know, their suggestions, anything possibly? That's up to the board, but.
Nah, I think that's fine, some type of survey with students, students, teachers, just students. I, I don't really know the right way, but.
Right.
Yeah, we de- definitely need the public input for that, don't disagree with that.
And this is with the, um, elementary students, probably fifth grade, sixth graders, teachers and all.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can, uh, work on that by the next time we get together.
Sounds good.
And I'll, um, try to bring you some data of what the community spoke to. All right, next, uh.
Excuse me, Dr. Carter, but that also includes a mascot or?
Yes, that could include the mascot, that is not as important.
Or than the name of the school.
The name of the school is urgently important because we will need to order signage that will go on the marquee and on the wall of the building.
How soon?
Um, probably by November. Like on the outside brick wall, just like the other schools have Maherian Powellton Elementary, to tell you what. This building is going to need letters on the, on the wall.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, next item, overnight field trips. Uh, Board members, as you know, um, the objective is always to give you information ahead of time for overnight field trips. But one opportunity was presented for the FBLA to attend a trip, and that information was not available to us in August. So that will be presented to you for information and action tonight to approve the FBLA to travel to Virginia Beach, September twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
This is for conference? Yeah, conferences.
Yes, the Learn to Lead Conference.
Right, okay.
And, and, uh, gender preparation for upcoming meetings, um, there is a special called Joint Board of Supervisors School Board Meeting, Wednesday, September tenth, six P.M. at the Brunswick County Conference Center. And the virtual link is already set up. Board members, if you were not aware, um, you can approve now or at a time later. Ms. McMillan is asked to attend that meeting virtually. And your next regular scheduled school board meeting is going to be on Tuesday, October fourteenth, back here with closed session beginning at six o'clock. Any questions?
Now, how would we go about going on and approving her now, or would it be better just to do it at the night of the meeting? What would be best?
I, I would say it'd be best to be prepared to do it at the time of the meeting, the same way you did tonight for Ms. Seward.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, um, Board Committee reports, um, Finance.
Finance Committee, I think, uh, Ms. Clary gave a good report on the, uh, on the finances tonight. I would like to say, after all that work, to end up with zero, that's really good work, and, you know, a lot of stuff goes into that. So thank y'all all for the hard work on zero and at the budget. But, uh, as always, continue on trying to find ways to save us money and use our resources the best.
Personnel, human resources?
No, no report.
Facilities, Mr. Ward.
We did meet, um, myself, Mr. Per Year, Dr. Carter, with a, uh, small committee from the Board of Supervisors to, um, talk about facilities a little bit, mainly the athletic stadium. So that will be part of the conversation this Wednesday night that we have with the Board of Supervisors, hoping to se- secure some funding for the new athletic stadium and moving on to the next step with that. And that's all I have to report on facilities. And of course, you saw his update on the elementary school, it's really looking good over there, really looking nice, really excited about that. And at the high school, middle school, i- it really looks good, and just a lot of improvements and a, a lot of hard work has been put in, so thank y'all.
Policy, Dr. Burns and Ms. Seward.
Okay, the Policy Committee met on August the twenty-eighth at eleven. Attendees included Mrs. Seward, Mrs. Pearson, and yours truly. And during the meeting, the Committee reviewed the Policy GAC and GACR. No additional policy were added for the view.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And instruction?
No, no report.
No report. And athletics?
No report.
Well, I should have said that. Yeah, go ahead.
No, good.
No.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to say, the, um, I guess the dream team, you know, gave.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Yeah.
And, um, I think also, since our last meeting, you attended an AI workshop as well.
Yes, 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 yes. That was in Richmond?
Yeah, one online as well.
Yes, one online, that was great, good information.
And emergency management? No report there? All right, um, we now will move into our action agenda. Mr. Chair, you can proceed.
Dr. Carter, thank you for all the reports tonight, everybody, I appreciate that. Um, I will now take a motion to approve the FBLA overnight field trip as requested earlier.
Vice Chair, I would like to call for a motion to approve the FBLA overnight field trip as requested.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. I will now accept a motion to approve the SOQ compliance report as presented.
So moved, Vice Chair. Second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right. I will now take a motion to approve the minutes from the August eleventh Board Meeting.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes from August eleventh.
Thank you, so have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it again. Approval of the bills.
So moved, Vice Chair.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
None.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it, thank you. Policy approval, I will now take a motion to approve the Policy JKPC Cell Phone Free Learning Environment as presented.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair, I make a motion to approve the Policy JKPC Cell Phone Free Learning Environment as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, I would now take a motion to approve the appointment of the new Superintendent, Dr. Carter, to a three-year contract.
So moved, Vice Chair. Second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Congratulations. I don't know, I will say, was that for him or because we did something good? All I'm going to say is, awesome to see the support you have, so, cool.
Congratulations, Dr. Carter.
All right, I will now take a motion to approve the personnel list as presented.
So moved, Vice Chair.
I have a second? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, I will now move on to Board comments.
Okay, I guess I'll start off. First of all, congratulations to Dr. Carter, our new superintendent. Um, and also, I want to say a special, um, thank you to Dr. Carter again, and Ms. Per Year, and Ms. Bourne for attending the District, um, Powhatan District Town Hall Meeting. I greatly appreciated your support and the support of the community and the collaboration with the Board of Supervisors as well. Um, the, the Board of Supervisor member as well, who attended along with their chair, um, too, and the community. I want to say congratulations, um, but first, thank you to Victoria. Um, Victoria is not shy, she was acting a little shy tonight, I know Victoria. But great job to Victoria, she went outside of her comfort zone, so I just want to, um, just thank Victoria for doing that. And also, congratulations to Joy Bell, um, the young lady of soft words, but her presence is powerful. And I do agree that, you know, for I know the plans of the Lord is to prosper her and not to harm her, to give her a hope and a future. And also, congratulations to Minister Earl Wil- Wilson, or Mr. Earl Wilson as well, for his impact and his sharp service. And congratulations to Ms. Parker, shining star. Thank you to the phenomenal Dream Team, to everyone else who did presentations tonight. Um, and again, congratulations, Dr. Carter.
Okay, I'm not going to repeat the same, but I, I, I just, but I do, um, go, you know, um, agree with what you just said, but I, but I do want to say, Dr. Carter, we're looking for, looking for great things from you. Congratulations. Congratulations again.
Ms. Seward, I'm gonna save you for last, being you are the chair, and let you finish this thing out, if that's okay? But definitely, uh, congratulations to Ms. Bell, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Parker on the hard work, and I just thank you, everybody. You know, the numbers tonight, some of them look good, and I'll be honest with you, some of them were concerning, but the explanations were so good about, you know, not just, this is not what it says, but this is really where we're at. And that made a big difference, to hear really where we're headed and just the, the good path, the enthusiasm, which I will say, y'all are enthusiastic group. And I know hard work, good things happen with hard work, right? And, but the students have got to buy into it, and I hope they will, and I think y'all encourage it. So thank you so much again for that. Again, congratulations on the budget, zeroing that out at the end of the year, that is a big deal. That's a big deal for everybody, guys. You know, we can't go over on that. Last thing, I see how your group supports you, I think that's really awesome, I don't think that was fake. So definitely look forward to, uh, let's just say, many good years ahead. And, uh, thank you all for everything, and I appreciate y'all coming tonight. Ms. Seward?
Um, I would like to first say thank you to my board for extending the opportunity for me to attend this meeting, uh, virtually. Thank you, I do mean that from the bottom of my heart. And I, I am really overjoyed, um, and almost tearful. Um, and it's just that, for I know the plans that he has for Brunswick County Public Schools, and I know they are great plans. I love the fact that we are embracing the red and we are not shying away from it, but the red totally means something different now. The red means on to the next thing, because we conquered that Goliath, now we're on to our next thing. And I am so excited to see what this phenomenal team, as Ms. McMillan called them appropriately, what this phenomenal, phenomenal team will do moving this school division forward. From 109 to 131 to greater things to come, I thank each and every one of you for the work that you do. And, uh, Dr. Carter, again, welcome and thank you for accepting the charge of being our superintendent, thank you.
All right, well, I know y'all don't want this thing to end, but I am gonna take a motion to adjourn. I am gonna accept a motion to, oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Not to prolong the meeting, but just a couple of things. One, thank you, uh, for the, the vote of support. Uh, thank you for our entire team, for the information that you shared, and, uh, I think it's critical that we do embrace the red. We know where we are, we're not at the top, we are closer to the bottom than we are to the top, but we are climbing faster than everyone around us. So at that rate of change, we will not be 109 for the foreseeable future, and that's our goal. Um, I did receive a text message, uh, Mr. Peryear said he was not able to attend in person, but he, um, wanted me to just say that, uh, he also congratulated me on the appointment and that I have his support. And, uh, thank you, um, Ms. Pritchett for sharing the information you did about transportation. It is a huge, uh, need for our school division, as well as many of the things that you all mentioned instructionally about getting, um, out of as much of the red as we're in. That also is gonna take some resources that we don't have right now. We, we can't do as many of the Saturdays and after-school tutoring days as we would like to, those are all budgetary concerns. And, uh, Ms. Wark, you're spot on about, we're utilizing all of our, um, resources to zero our budget out, but we're gonna have to grow our budget in order to grow our results. And we're looking forward to, you know, hopefully being able to secure more funds and also being able to use the funds that we have as wisely as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now take a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold on. Meeting adjourned.